I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Blaco.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Commissioner Pritzos.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Mandelwell, Agent Allison Fleming.
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Alma Royall.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have public comment. This item is either public comment on any action item or for the general public, and is limited to no more than three minutes. Anybody from the public wishes to speak? All right, we'll close a public comment. We'll move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion on the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first from Commissioner Carey and a second from Commissioner Blaco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have approval of the minutes. First are the review and possible approval of the January 14th, 2020 Planning Commission Study Session. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I object to your motion. We approve the minutes of January 14th. As read.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson and a second by Commissioner Carey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed? Thank you. And an abstain from Commissioner Blaco. Next, we have review and possible approval of the minutes of the January 16th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting. Do we have a motion?
Again, Madam Chair, I can make the motion that we approve the minutes of January 16th. As read.
Thank you.
I'll second.
A first by Commissioner Peterson and a second by Commissioner Pritzos. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next, I didn't see informational items that's usually in there. Are we, did we take that out of the agenda?
We have revised the agenda to provide for, you know, further clarity in terms of any possible items to be discussed.
Okay. So next, we have public hearing items. First up is CA-4-19, Consideration of and Possible Action on Amendments to Title 20, Chapter 20-03-020, Home Occupations of the Sparks Municipal Code to Add or Revise Standards Pertaining to Hours of Operation, the Number of Permits Allowed Per Dwelling Unit, Permitted Uses, and Standards and Procedures for Revocation of Home Occupation Permits. That was a mouthful. Anyway, got it all out.
Thank you. Chair Reed, Jim Rundell, Planning Manager, here to present Code Amendment 4-19, which are possible amendments to the laws governing home occupation permits in the Sparks Municipal Code. A home occupation permit is a mechanism which provides residents the ability to operate a business from their home. These regulations associated with a home occupation permit ensure that businesses will be operated in a manner that does not compromise the integrity of a residential zoning district. Those regulations are constructed to ensure the business operates as a secondary or incidental use to the primary use of that structure, which is residential. There are currently 518 addresses that are utilizing the home occupation permit in the City of Sparks. Occasionally, residents will contact the city and identify potential violations to the Sparks Municipal Code, and sometimes those are in regard to home occupation permits. Those typically fall under the purview of the Code Enforcement Division, who will go out and investigate those complaints. The Sparks Municipal Code provides the administrator the ability to revoke a home occupation permit if the operator is not complying with those standards. In October of the last, of last year, 2019, the Sparks City Council considered an item that was an appeal of the City of Sparks' decision to revoke a home occupation permit. After testimony from both sides, from the staff and the appellant, the city council deemed it was inappropriate for staff to revoke the home occupation permit, given the lack of clarity in the Sparks Municipal Code. On that basis, the city council at that meeting directed staff to, to compose amendments to that home occupation permit, to those home occupation permit regulations, and that's what brings us here in front of the Planning Commission today. The Sparks Planning Commission acts in an advisory capacity to the Sparks City Council on laws regulating zoning in the Sparks Municipal Code. Staff is proposing that the Planning Commission consider the following amendments, and we have Exhibit One that is up on the board. Hopefully, you can, oh yeah, that's easy to see. But it is an Exhibit One in your packet as well. I'd like to start out with Standard Five. Standard Five, staff has proposed to add hours of operation. It came up by Planning Commissioner Carey at the study session on why we had added, or actually added, the hour 8:00 PM in the evening as opposed to being consistent with 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And what I want to talk about is that those hours of operation, or excuse me, the hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM tend to go along with construction hours. So those are things that are going on outside of, of a building and could affect, could very well affect a neighboring residential property. These are proposed to be 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, allowing one additional hour for potential clients that would come and go inside of the structure and should not affect anything outside. Because I remember, if you look at Standard Two, which we touched on, I think Commissioner Blaco, you brought it up, you cannot operate in the garage, so you can't be out cutting things in the garage, using saws. The, the regulations limit the home occupation to be inside of the built, inside of the house, and not utilizing accessory structures, sheds, garages to, to operate that home occupation permit. The next standard I want to bring the Planning Commission's attention to that staff has proposed changes on is Standard 11. We want to make it very clear that the use is restricted to the use that is identified on the application that the property owner fills out, or the person desiring to use the home occupation fills out. It did come up at the city council meeting. One of the points that staff made was that the use was not in, in support or did not match the use that was listed on the home occupation permit application. So we want to make it clear that the use that is proposed shall be the use that you do at your home. The next standard that staff is proposing to add is that you're, they're only allowed one home occupation permit per address, and that's Standard 12 that we've added that. And the case was made in October to the city council by the appellant that the person that was conducting the violations of the home occupation permit and of the Sparks Municipal Code was one of the other residents living at the address, but was not, in fact, the person that was holding the home occupation permit. We would like to make it clear that in this case, you would only have one home occupation permit, and essentially, it's clear that all the residents would have to comply with, with those standards, or potential revocation could occur. Standard C-2B, which is on the next page, page two of your Exhibit One in your packet, identifies, we have proposed to strike the ability to utilize a conditional use permit to exempt one of the standards that's listed in the home occupation permit section. The conditional use permit is a mechanism that the Planning Commission considers to identify potential mitigation measures that should be put on a use that is already approved in a certain zoning district. You do not come in with a conditional use permit and ask to establish a use that is otherwise not permitted in that zoning district. To be consistent and with the municipal code, we would like to strike what is currently offered because we think it's out of context with what the conditional use permit is in the code to allow. The next standard I'd like to bring your attention to is Standard C-3B, and that is still on page two of Exhibit One in your packet. Staff has proposed that the administrator would have the ability to revoke a home occupation permit if that address has received two code enforcement violations within a 12-month rolling calendar. When we took this item forward to the city council and presented it for them, to them on the appeal of the revocation, we had identified that nine code enforcement violations had been issued to the address in the, within the time that the home occupation permit had been permitted. However, it may, the case could be made, it was immaterial because it did not identify in the municipal code how many code enforcement violations should lead to revocation. So staff is proposing that two is a, a maximum number, and then staff could look at revocation of that permit. As I touched on earlier, the Planning Commission acts in an advisory capacity on an ordinance change to the zoning standards in the Sparks Municipal Code. We would be looking for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the Sparks City Council with this item. And that concludes my presentation.
Jim, do any of the commissioners have questions for staff? At this time? Commissioner Blaco?
It occurred to me after our study session, you asked this question. Is there only one business per home occupation, home occupation permit, or can multiple businesses be filed?
One business license.
One business license? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just a real quick clarification on the, the two violations. Is that after they have been given two violations, it can be revoked, or if they've already had to, another one would, would result in revocation?
I'm not sure if I understand, but I'll, I'll try. Commissioner Pritzos, if you have a home occupation permit and you received the home occupation permit on January 1st, 2020.
Yeah.
And within 12 months, so prior to January 1st, 2021, you've received notice of two violations, then staff would have the ability to revoke the home occupation permit?
Yeah, that answered my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Since this is a public hearing item, I'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment, or anybody in the public that wishes to comment on this item? All righty then, well, we will close the public hearing, and are there any other questions from the commissioners? Or?
Madam Chair, a couple, couple additional questions for staff. Thanks for coming back up, Jim. Had a question about the new Standard 11, and my, my question is, is there any kind of limitations on the uses that an applicant can put on their, their application in terms of the business that's, that's operated?
Yeah, there would be. The, the, when staff reviews the application, for example, if the applicant said they're going to conduct car sales out of their house, staff would consider that and determine whether or not that complies with, with the zoning standards. Car, car sent, car sales is limited to the industrial district in the City of Sparks. Now, if they identified further on that home occupation permit application, that they would be doing, storing cars off-site, and simply be doing administration or clerical work at the home occupation permit, maybe accounting, staff would require that to be further articulated on the home occupation permit application, and could then, then permit it.
Okay.
But there, there would be, there is a review process to ensure that it is in the context of what a home occupation should be.
Okay, thank you for that, that explanation. I figured there was something outside of the limitations in the, in the code amendment. My other question was regarding appeals for, you know, revoking the permit. Looks like we're giving, with this proposed code amendment allowing staff more ability to revoke permits and clarity to do that, are there any changes to the revocation process? And could you kind of give us a highlight on what that is?
The, we did, we did.
For the appeal process, sorry.
Sure. The, maybe I'll attempt to do both. In, in page two of Exhibit One, under C-2B, we have identified that staff will provide written notice that a home occupation permit application is, is denied. That has been further clarified, as opposed to you have the ability to come in and request a conditional use permit. So that is one requirement that staff will have to meet. If your home occupation permit does not comply with the standards, you would receive written notification that it's been deemed inappropriate for, for the home. Your second question, Commissioner Carey, was in regard to appeal process. The appeal process is identified in another section of the Sparks Municipal Code in Title 20, and essentially provides that, Council McCormick, I may need help on this one, how much time you have to appeal a decision of staff? I think it's 10 days.
Allison McCormick, for the record, it, it is 10 days. It actually might be 11 days. It's somewhere in that range, but it's the general appeal process for other types of zoning and land use appeals.
Oh, okay.
So they can appeal to city council.
Under that provision, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Carey, it would be no different than if the county, Planning Commission denied a conditional use permit, and the applicant chose to appeal that decision to the Sparks City Council. They would have 11 days to appeal that, come into the city clerk. We have an appeal, appeal application that they would need to fill out. And then we have, by ordinance, a certain amount of time to get that scheduled in front of the Sparks City Council, and it would be the exact same procedure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Any other comments or looking for in motion?
Oh, go ahead, make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Blaco.
I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council of the amendments to Title 20, Chapter 20.03.020, Home Occupations, the Sparks Municipal Code, to add or revise standards pertaining to hours of operation, the number of permits allowed per dwelling union, unit, permitted uses, and standards and procedures for the revocation of home occupation permits associated with CA-4-19.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Pritzos. So we have a first by Commissioner Blaco, second by Commissioner Pritzos. All those in favor, say aye.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Comments or discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Thank, thank you. Just a couple of comments for, for the record. I will be supporting the motion. I think these proposed changes will help prevent that confusion, allow staff greater ability to regulate home occupation permits and deal with issues. And if, I initially had some concerns about the hours of operation and eight o'clock, but I feel with the, the five client visits per, per day and the hours of operation, that's going to do a lot to eliminate the, or reduce the land use impact for this, and I think that that's, that's a good thing. And I appreciate the information at the study session and Commissioner, and, and the discussion about, you know, the, the need to have hours of, of, of operations. So we'll be supporting the motion, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sorry, I missed that part. So we have a motion. All those in, in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we move on to general business items. First is PCN 16045, Consideration of and Possible Action on a Request to Approve Architectural Building Elevations for a New 4,339-Square-Foot Restaurant Building with a Drive-Thru and Outdoor Dining in Zone C of the Legends Shopping Center in Fulfillment of the Requirements Set forth in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Reed, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Dani Ray, planner, for the record. Before we begin, I have two informational items very quickly. Commissioner Carey had requested the number of remaining pads in the Legends Plan Development. There are 11 pads remaining, five of which have projects in process, so that leaves six available pads with no activity as of yet. Also, your staff reports contain a typo on page two where the address is shown as 375 Sparks Boulevard. In fact, the address is 275 Sparks Boulevard. I apologize for the error. The address was not in the agendized item description, nor was it required to be noticed. This application is for consideration of commercial building elevations in the Legends and Sparks Marina Plan Development, located here at 275 Sparks Boulevard, right here in the area outlined in Cardinal. It's north of the Chase Bank and the Chick-fil-A. It's accessed by Sparks Boulevard right here, also accessed through various areas in the parking area. The zoning for this project is NUD, New Urban District, Legends at Sparks Marina, and the land use is MUD, MUC, or Mixed Use District, Mixed Use Commercial. The regulatory authority for this project is the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook. The proposed new 4,339-Square-Foot Panera Bread Restaurant Building with Drive-Thru will be located in Zone C of the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development along Sparks Boulevard here, and the site's accessible, I already said that. Approval of architectural building elevations is required by the handbook and to be made by the Planning Commission. You may recall, similar elevations for a Panera restaurant was seen by, and approved by the Planning Commission as part of PCN 08011 on June 6th of 2019, for a different location. It was near the TJ Maxx and Payless Shoe Store, within the Legends Plan Development. That applicant ultimately reconsidered the location, decided not to undertake the project. This is a new applicant with a new location. The elevations are very, very similar to what was approved in the past by you. These proposed elevations do conform to the handbook and the City of Sparks Design Standards Manual as required by the handbook. The proposed elevations, they do incorporate a variety of facade materials. We have the stucco along this area, and this area is Wimarrana, or Wimarrana color, and Berber white. The brick is desert blend, Sioux City Brick, and this stone right here is Eldorado Stone in the color of buckskin, and the trim along the awnings, window trim, and the roofing trim is metal and is brown. And staff does believe the proposed, whoops, one more. Staff does believe these proposed elevations do comply with the standards of the handbook and recommends approval to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Commissioners have any questions for staff at this time?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Blaco.
The road that goes north on the property that eventually deadends into, I believe, a sidewalk, does applicant have the ability to restrict traffic, the direction, or the volume on that road?
This is a sidewalk?
No, to the left of that.
Chair?
Yes.
That's a very good question. I do not have the answer. Ian, do you?
My, my question is, because I know that, that road is primarily used to exit a few other businesses that are in the vicinity, and I just wanted to know if that was going to remain open to the public to use as an exit.
Yes, Ian Creighton, Acting Development Services Manager. That road actually exits onto Lincoln and, and is a portion of the property, and so it will continue to be used as such. If you go back here and look at that, it actually goes all the way out and exits out to.
If I recall correctly, you actually have to get into where the gas station is.
Oh, you have to enter to the gas station.
So they actually have to get onto another person.
So in, in any, in any event, it, it, there's no, there's no intent to limit their ability to use that road for whatever purpose they would like to. At this point, the Planning Commission is looking at the elevations, and so even if we did think that they needed to do that, it's something that we could do at this.
Yeah, it's kind of unclear in the elevation plan, just whether or not the construction will do anything to that road in particular, but.
There's no intent to, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Just a comment, if I may.
Go ahead, Commissioner Carey.
I like how these, I like how these elevations look. Appreciate the detailed analysis by staff, and thanks for the research on the number of pads remaining. That was, that's good information to know.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you, Dani. Would the applicant like to come up and add any additional information or comments?
My name is, is Jeff Parker with Jeffrey Parker Architects. I'm the applicant. I came here from Grand Rapids, Michigan, to be here tonight, although Frank said, don't expect too much controversy. But anyway, I just wanted you to know that we're excited to be here and to become a part of Sparks. So, but I don't think I really have anything to add unless you had any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Just a moment.
Well, you know.
Okay.
I think we're good. Thank you for coming all the way from Grand Rapids.
It was my pleasure.
Thank you. Any other further discussion by the commission or motion?
I'll take a stab at it.
Okay. Commissioner Carey?
I move to approve the architectural elevations for a new restaurant building with a drive-thru and outdoor dining in Zone C of the Legends Shopping Center in fulfillment of the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook.
Thank you. We have a first, do we have a second? A second by Commissioner Rawson. All the, first by Commissioner Carey, second by Commissioner Watson. Any further discussion before we make the motion?
I would like to comment in here. I, I really like these elevations, and I saw very, very little change in the one that came before before, so I really just would like to say that I also support this application.
And I'd like to comment that I think a bunch of us are very happy to have Panera Bread in our region. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you to staff. Next, we have item eight, which is selection of a commissioner to serve as a second alternate on the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Commission, effective immediately from the following pool of applicants. Frank Peterson, Evan Pritzos, and Mike Rawson.
Madam Chair, I'll take a stab at this.
Okay, Commissioner Carey?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Commissioner Pritzos.
Commissioner Pritzos, do we have a second? We have a first to appoint Commissioner from Carey, and a second by Commissioner Rawson. Any further discussion? Any other? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain. You shouldn't vote yourself.
Thank you. So Commissioner Pritzos is officially the second alternate on the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Commission, and don't think that you will be serving. Next, we have item nine. It is review and possible amendment of the Sparks Planning Commission Rules of Rules of Procedure.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commission. For the record, I'm Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick. I'm here before you requesting your approval of amendment to your rules of procedure. Those rules require that the Planning Commission review the rules for possible amendments at least annually, and that's what we're doing here tonight. There are two main changes that I'd like to draw your attention to. One is to the Order of Business, which is described in Rule 4 Sub 3. That has been amended to reflect current practice after some discussions with the city clerk about how they want to see agendas looking for all boards and commissions going forward. The main changes there are removing the informational items, item, and changing comments from the commissioners to read announcements from staff and commissioners to better comply with the open meeting law, and to indicate that those should be announcements, not discussion of items that aren't specifically agendized. The other change that staff is proposing is a change to Rule 4 Sub 9 regarding failure of a motion. The rules as they exist today don't address what happens when a motion fails, and this amendment would clarify that if a motion fails to obtain a majority vote, that doesn't mean that the opposite of the motion has occurred. That just means that that motion failed, and a subsequent motion is required. So many of you will probably remember, a few months ago, there was an application before you, a motion to approve, the application failed, and I opined at the time that that meant that the application was technically denied, and that was incorrect. Our Planning Commission rules didn't say so, but our Planning Commission rules do say that we fall back on Roberts Rules of Order if the Planning Commission rules are silent, and Roberts Rules is about an inch thick of tiny words, and somewhere in there, it does say that failure of a motion is no action. So this amendment would codify that. This amendment also tracks language in the city council rules of procedure, so it would bring the Planning Commission's rules into more consistency with those city council rules. Staff does recommend approval of these proposed amendments, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any of the commissioners have questions? Staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Carey.
Thank you, and appreciate these, your work on these changes. So just to be clear, if a motion by the Planning Commission doesn't pass, we need to take some action.
Yes, yes. So if a motion to approve an application failed to obtain majority support, either a different motion to approve would need to be made, you know, if it was a conditional use permit, you might, you know, someone might move to approve with the conditions proposed by staff, and that motion could fail, someone could move to approve with additional conditions, for example. Or, you know, a motion to deny an application would need to be made and obtain majority support.
And a follow-up, if I may, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I think this is probably a good opportunity to go over this, is, you know, what's the difference between, like, denial with prejudice and without prejudice?
So with prejudice means that they can't resubmit their application and try again. Without prejudice would mean that, you know, they could come in the next day and refile their application. And our code is pretty specific about which things can be denied with prejudice versus without. I think annexations are one that is denied with prejudice, and they can't reapply for, I believe it's a year. Don't quote me on that.
Thank you.
And then the quick, Commissioner Peterson, go ahead.
You mentioned that in the event that we can't reach a decision, that we are allowed to put conditions on?
On a conditional use permit. That was just an example. So if staff proposed five conditions, and you couldn't vote to approve without adding two more.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Maybe a follow-up to that point. You know, if we, putting, kind of getting to Commissioner Peterson's question about additional conditions, you know, to meet that threshold, to pass the motion or not, we could also put additional conditions if we, as a commission, don't feel we can make the findings for approval.
Yes, and I think that would be, you know, that would be the reason that you would vote no on the first motion to approve with five conditions, and, you know, with two additional conditions, you might feel like you can get to yes. So that, yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Blakow.
I move to approve the amendments to the Sparks Planning Commission Rules of Procedures as proposed by staff.
We have a motion, does anybody?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakow, and a second by Commissioner Peterson. Any further comment? Further comment? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So next, we move on to public comment. Is there anybody that wishes to make public comment? Okay, well, we will close public comment and move on to announcements from staff and commissioners.
Madam Chair, staff does not have any comments.
Does it have any announcements? All righty then, well, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.